We'll move on. So now we will move on. I call our afternoon regular business meeting of the Clicktack County Commissioners to order. Let's record all three commissioners are pleasant, pleasant, present and pleasant. And we will start with a pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda as presented.
And I will second.
Okay, we have a motion second to approve the business agenda. Any discussion on the business agenda? Hearing none, I would advise staff to please put an ad on on the agenda for Thursday. During the prosecutor's time to discuss public records requests. Issues. Remind me is why I'm bringing that up now. Any other discussion of the business agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of business agenda, say aye, 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 motion passes. We do not have any commissioner meeting minutes to do. So we will move on to citizen comments. Citizen comment is three minutes. Everybody is allowed one turn to speak. You have three minutes. Please state your name and general location of where you live for the record. And as always, we will start in the room. If anybody in the room up, I'm seeing a hand wave. Come on down.
Hannah Magnuson, Goldendale. I was here about a week or so ago and I stayed for three hours and had to get up and leave. Because you're kicking the road, the can down the road on a short term rental. And so I went home and I thought about this and I thought that's gotta be simpler than this. I mean, come on guys. And so I thought, well, let's compare it to a when you go to the auditor's office to get new tabs for your car. Okay, you go in there, you say, I need some new tabs. She goes on the computer, she takes registration. She, she didn't ask me, she didn't ask me I had if I had insurance. The cop will, he stops me. She didn't ask me if my car was safe. She didn't ask me if I was safe. You know, and so I'm thinking, well, why can't we do that when they come in for a short term rental? You ask them for your building permit, their insurance, and here sign this whole uh hold a harmless thing for Clicktack County. They give you the money, you given the permit, they take the problem home with them. Okay? That rancher that's running that property needs to ask where the septic tank is. What kind of water does a dog bite? Hey, they drove down that road so that you know where where it's at. They chose that. They didn't chose a hotel or motel. I have traveled, so have you guys all over. Do you ask where the septic is? Do you ask where the water comes from? Do you ask for the parking lot safe for your vehicle? No. Okay, that's because the only thing I check, you'll you'll do it now after I tell you. I go to the bed and I throw the covers back to see if they change the sheets. That's the only thing I check. Okay? So let's give, let's give the the problem back to the owner. Okay? Keep it simple, guys. We've all heard that. Keep it simple. You guys don't have time for all this stuff. Change this, change that, 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 and it goes with everything you do. You've got too much to do. So that's my free advice for the day.
Okay, thank you ma'am. We will go online. We have Aya Walker with her hand up.
It's Aya Walker's the pronunciation.
Sorry, go ahead.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes. Go ahead ma'am.
Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Aya Walker. I'm Hannah Rose Walker's mama. I'm speaking to you from Utah. I'm here today to let you know that we still haven't heard from Clickatat authorities despite our multiple requests to meet. And we have several significant questions about Clickatat's investigation into the suspicious death of my beautiful daughter Hannah Rose Walker. Question for today. Why wasn't the family notified of my daughter's death? No notification until I called three days later. On Saturday morning, three days after she was found dead, I called your sheriff's office for a wellness check because I hadn't heard from her since she was on the way to the river. Less than an hour later, local police were at my door to tell me that my daughter was dead and had been found in suspicious circumstances three days prior. Three days. Please think about how much time that is. What do you do in three days' time? Your normal day at the office. Three days flow. What do you do? The coroner said he was given my name and location at the scene. If you go to Google and you search Aya Walker, how long does it take to obtain my professional contact information? Less than five seconds. Likewise, if you go to Facebook, I am the only one I come up again right at the top. Additionally, Hannah's pride or public Facebook page lists her other family members. Commissioner, you mentioned that the electorate is the oversight committee for the sheriff's office, the prosecutor's office, the coroner's office. Well, I would like to encourage the electorate to visit the website that we've created using the facts of the case that were derived from public records. The press release we've provided to all your local area newspapers several weeks ago can be found on the media page. Only one of your local newspapers has published anything at all, and it was a political cartoon with no context given. The website information will provide context for your electorate. So again, today's question, why wasn't the family notified of my daughter's suspicious death? Thank you.
Thank you. We will go back in the room. Does anybody else in the room have citizen comment today? Go ahead.
Kathy Moko, Goldendale. At first I wasn't sure what I was gonna say today and I spoke to a friend Lisa and I said, you have any interesting things? She said, well, you know, it's really quiet. Things are good, but they're quiet. And I thought, well, that's not a bad thing. When you don't have anything bad, that is a good thing. But one thing I would like to say is this goes back to the fair. People are just getting over fair. It took me about a week to get over fair, but I think that the commissioners did a really, really good thing when you lowered the cost to get into the fair. Thursday's free and then it's half of what it was five years ago to get in. And it is Saturday, there were a lot of people there. A lot of people. There were a lot of people there all week, but particularly on Saturday, there were just a large amount of people there. And I'm sure that has to do with the fact that they could afford to be there, some families. So anyway, I think that's a really neat thing that you guys did to make it more accessible for all of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're shuffling papers, but we're also probably all looking at the fair attendance. Sheet that's in front of us while you were talking there. So hence the reason we were shuffling papers. Let's go back online. Does anybody else online have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? Hearing none. And my little participants. See who's out there. How many of them are county employees listening? We will be in citizen comment for about another thirteen minutes. If anybody online has citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today, please raise your hand or unmute yourself or otherwise get our attention. So that we can get you said comment. And we'll, we'll sign some papers while we wait. Anybody has citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners? Please raise your hand or unmute yourself or otherwise get our attention.
No, I just said it's on. There's one, Don Brian.
I see a name, Don Brian.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I was wondering if you would consider opening a office in White Salmon one or two days a week for vehicle licensing to give us some relief up here because when you go in there, you're packed in like sardines. Not much room in the little office they have there. But I do know that it costs money, so anyway, just maybe something you can think about. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else out there have citizen comments? For any of you that might be new, commissioners do reserve time at one twenty-five to give statements and or ask answered questions that arise or whatnot. We still have nine more minutes to go before that. Bill and citizen comment. If anybody's got citizen comment out there.
Anybody have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today?
Anyone? We know who Gunnar is.
Yes. If I train you well, Obi-Wan, you should know. Now I guess technically we can all just be quiet and unmute their mic randomly. And then we can hear what they're talking about. Unmute somebody from here. I wouldn't recommend we do, but I think we can unmute.
You can only mute someone.
Oh. Still in citizen comment. If anybody's got citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today. We will be patiently waiting here for four more minutes. Bill and citizen comment for two minutes. If anybody out there in internet land would like to make citizen comment for us today.
I'm sending this. I send it to okay.
All righty, one twenty-five, time for commissioners comments if they have any. Do either of you have comments for?
I'm sure. So from what I understand of our ongoing short term rental, like law, it all takes time unfortunately, and we are tied to the state RCWs and they created their RCWs and we have to meet or exceed those. So we're trying to craft our ordinance to at least meet what the state is requiring us to do. That's why we're asking for everything. And I again, our condolences and there's because of the our position and legal, there's nothing more than I can do but give you my heartfelt condolences. Kathy, I agree on the cost of the fair. I appreciated it. I took family to the fair and it was awesome. So and and it's neat that we help with those types of things for children and for families to get out and do something good on a weekend. And Mr. Brian, we will ask the auditor. That's up to her in her position and I agree. I think it's a great thing. I used to like it when there was a licensing office in the White Salmon area. It was good for me.
Ms. Magnuson, I agree with you. I like to keep things simple as much as possible. I won't speak to the rest of it, but yeah, the old ad, yeah, keep it simple. Ms. Walker, again, my heart goes out to you. You experienced the thing that no parent ever should. And I wish there's more we can do, but unfortunately there's nothing that this board can do. And Kathy, thank you for your positive statements that it feels quiet. I know with how busy I've been, it does not feel quiet at all. Thank you for feeling that way, at least from your side. And then the numbers from the fair look like we had eight hundred and thirty-three season passes and three thousand nine hundred and eighty-two adults that attended and six hundred and thirty-five people from out of town. So it was a good attendance. It wasn't the same attendance as last year, but pretty close. And then Donnie, we've had discussions about probably multiple election cycles about opening up a licensing on the west end. Unfortunately, you hit on the one thing that happens and that is the budget and money. And right now we're still looking to save about nine hundred thousand dollars in the budget and opening a new office and staffing that would get very expensive. And if we were to open the office and just send people down there, you would still have the same lines up here. They would just be compacted into fewer days because we wouldn't be adding staff in order to do it. I will say that I try to do everything I can online, so I avoid having to sit there for twenty or thirty minutes. And that's actually saved a lot of staff time by having the online options, which more and more people are going. But I definitely feel your pain when I do have to go in there. With that, I will yield back my time, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. With Kathy, I I understand where you're getting at, where keep it, you know, the old phrase, keep it simple stupid. And I mean, that's the actual phrase. So I just, you didn't, and thankfully you didn't say that, but that that is the phrase. Yes, we have to being conservative, that's something that we try to do when we pass legislation is make it as open and basic and least restrictive as possible. But the other thing we have to do is protect your taxpayer dollars and keep the county from being sued in any way, shape or form that we can, which we've already been through meetings today over being sued. So the last thing we want to do is start shelling out hundreds of thousands of dollars and or millions of dollars because we put legislation through that did not protect the health, safety and welfare of the general public, or we create zoning changes like one that's kind of right over there that doesn't protect the health, safety and welfare of the general public, and then you open yourself up for litigation. So it's kind of in the same regard, just lower scale. Ms. Walker, I I I concur with my seatmates. We we feel you and and we feel your pain. Unfortunately, we can't answer your question about the three day because we have no idea. So while I understand you are striving for answers. Unfortunately, I don't know that you will ever get those answers from the Board of Commissioners because the questions you're asking are not in the purview of the Board of Commissioners, but hopefully eventually you do get the answers you're looking for. Kathy, yeah, we already kind of covered on the fair. Yeah. And and then with Dawn, I I agree with Commissioner Anderson. It would be nice to put an office in down there. That would be up to the auditor. But where it becomes an issue is where are you going to put it? Because currently we don't have any office space down there. So then you have budget that you have to create office space and staff, which you know, yes, that might be something that the general public would like the county to do. And I have no problem with that, but it's up to the general public what priorities you want to have. And I have no problem with that, but it's up to the general public what priorities you want to have when you, when you want us to provide product or services to the people because we can't just create money or well, technically, we could create money. That's called raising your taxes, which y'all tell us not to do. So we're trying not to. But in doing so, we also have to live within the funding we already currently have with insanely high cost of living adjustments coming in, which technically for us in no short way of saying it means every single year, we have to look at more ways that we can cut products and services to not have to raise taxes. So technically, if we've got to come up with a half a million dollars for a new program, be that state legislature demanding that we have a coroner office and it's not a hired out service. Now, the Board of Commissioners got to figure out number one, where we're going to come up with a half a million dollars to fund such thing and where we're going to put it, number two. And we have about a year to do that. And so if we come up with five hundred thousand for them, we're obviously cutting five hundred thousand of one of these other fine people's budgets that all think they need as many products and services as they're providing. So hopefully through some strategic planning on the county's behalf, we can, my hope is send a survey out to the general public, asking them what products and services they use the most and rate them so that we know when we have to make cuts going forward in certain areas, we know at least where the general public would like us to provide those cuts. Because yeah, there's lots of people coming forward that want to spend money, be that childcare, dog shelters, licensing, all great ideas. But without another revenue source not happen. With that, we will end this comment. Hopefully, we got to everybody. And we will, being it's one thirty, it's time for public hearings, public meetings and bid openings. And we will start with public health since you're the first on my list. To review and receive comments on the final project performance of the CDGB coronavirus funds that were provided by Han. And she can come forward and give us a staff update or somebody on there. We'll always see it, Karen Long. Karen, are you going to give us an update on what we're doing here?
I believe so.
Perfect.
Hi, my name's Karen Long. I'm from Mid Columbia Housing Authority. We were the sub-grantee for the CBDCB funds or Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Funds. The program was available to low-income households in Skamania and Clickatac Counties who had a drop in income due to COVID-19. We started administering the program in February of 2021 and finished administration in March of 2023. We served thirty-seven households with one one hundred nine thousand three hundred ninety dollars in rent, utility and mortgage assistance. So it averaged about three thousand per household. So we served both Clickatac and Skamania County and we found in the end that about half the funds went to Clickatac and half the funds went to Skamania County. So it was a nice split between both counties. Does anyone have any questions?
Good question. I'm looking for my hearing procedural sheet, which I just looked online and I didn't see the tabs to the, do you have one? Work. Didn't see it in the agenda. Oh, it's over there. I was looking in my drawer. So with that, explanation of what we're doing here, we will declare the public hearing open for the purpose of allowing the public to weigh in on this. We already got the overview. Does the board have any clarification of the overview? Is there any public comment either in the room or online about the CBDG grant or the overview that we just heard? There's any public comment that wants to weigh in on this hearing, please unmute yourself or raise your hand. Seeing none. This is going to be the shortest public hearing in record. I guess I'll call last call for public comments. For against the CBDG grant. That will even be the term.
I mean, to take on the final performance.
On the final performance, there you go. So yes, this is based on evidence for or against the final performance of administering the grant is essentially what we're doing. Last call, public comments. Hearing none, seeing none. With that, I will close the public hearing to further public testimony. Open it for discussion by the board if there is any. I don't have any.
Are you, I mean, we don't have an action item on this, so.
Good question, Karen. We don't have an action item. Are you requesting that we take any kind of an action? Or do we just need to have the hearing?
I believe it's just the public hearing for the closeout of the CBDC grant.
That's what I thought. Okay. Alrighty then. So no action. Good enough. Well, thank you for attending and thank you for with that, I will close the public hearing. Already closed public comment, that's right. So we will close the public hearing. Thanks staff for their presentation and their update. And we will move on to the next public meeting, which is to consider final approval of subdivision S U B twenty eighteen dash zero two.
It's just a meeting, it's not a
Hello, commissioners. I assume you want a staff report?
Yes, please.
Okay. Sub twenty eighteen oh two is a proposal to create thirty-five lots from parcel oh four one zero three six one seven one zero zero two zero zero. It's in the Houston vicinity at the old golf course. The administrative review, the subdivision has been completed. Signatures have been obtained from the Public Works Health Planning Department and Treasurer's Office. All conditions of preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that it's in the public's interest to approve the subdivision, a motion needs to be made granting final approval of sub twenty eighteen oh two applicant Houston, Houston Greens, Representative Guy Skeel.
Any questions of staff or discussion needed here? Need discussion by the board?
Just for the public, this is the final approval. This application was actually approved prior to any of the, any of the sitting board members sitting here. The preliminary.
Including myself.
Hey, if there's no discussion, I would entertain a motion.
Go ahead, Lloyd.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the final subdivision number twenty eighteen dash oh two in the Houston vicinity.
I will second that motion.
Hey, we have a motion in a second to approve the final subdivision number S U B twenty eighteen dash zero two. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
And that, sir, look at the date on that, is how long it takes to get a full subdivision.
Well, twenty eighteen, it's obviously been around a while.
Yeah. That's how long it takes to do a full subdivision with all the hoops and everything. Excited to be done. I'd just like to say, since we're resigning, I'd like to say, thank, thank staff. Subdivisions, a full, long plats take a lot of work and time and effort, and I would like to say thank you to our staff for all their diligence of shepherding this through the process.
I know I felt like I should have wrote congratulations with my name, like a card.
One spot, right? Yep, and I need a new turkey. Somebody stole mine.
Ah, she's got two up there. She's got two.
Must have been planning commission.
Next up, we have public meeting to consider final approval of boundary line adjustment BLA twenty twenty-three dash zero four in the Lisle vicinity. Staff report, please.
Okay, so this is a BLA two zero two three dash zero four for the Sylvia Gold Trust. And the boundary line adjustment is to adjust the common property line between parcels zero two one two zero three two two one four zero two zero zero and zero two one two zero three two two zero four zero three zero zero of Spokane Avenue in Lisle. The proposed boundary line adjustment is located within a portion of section three township two, range twelve in the Lisle vicinity. The administrative review of the boundary line adjustment has been completed. Signatures have been obtained from the road, health, planning departments and the treasurer's office. All conditions attached to the preliminary approval have been met. If the road find, if the board finds that it's in the public's interest to approve the boundary line adjustment, a motion will be needed to grant final approval of BLA two zero two three dash zero four.
Okay, any clarifications from staff needed? Any discussion by the board needed? Hearing none, seeing none. With that, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, having before us the final approval of boundary line BLA twenty twenty-three dash zero four in the Lisle vicinity, I would make a motion to approve that boundary line adjustment.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve BLA twenty twenty-three dash zero four. Any further discussion on this topic? All those in favor of approval, BLA twenty twenty-three dash zero four, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Next up, we have BLA twenty twenty-three dash zero six.
Okay, so this is for final approval BLA zero two three dash oh six KLM Developing LLC. It is for a proposal to adjust the common property lines between parcels zero five one six three six one nine one zero zero four zero zero and zero five one six three six zero 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 one seven zero zero off of Tansanite Drive. The proposed boundary line adjustment is located within a portion of section thirty-six township five, range sixteen in the Gondal vicinity. The administrative review of the boundary line adjustment has been completed. Signatures have been obtained from the road, health and planning departments and the treasurer's office. All conditions attached to the preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that it's in the public's interest to approve the boundary line adjustment, a motion will be needed to grant final approval BLA two zero two three dash oh six.
Okay, any questions for staff? Any discussion by the board?
None here.
No.
I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, having before us final approval of short plot SPL or sorry, BLA twenty twenty-three dash zero six, my motion is to approve. Just getting ahead of myself.
Well, second.
Okay, motion is second there, so we need discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, founder, final approval of boundary line adjustment BLA twenty twenty-three dash zero six or yeah, zero zero six, say aye.
Aye.
Right, I am just, I am definitely having issues today. Alrighty, moving on, SPL twenty twenty-two dash two three.
Okay, so this is for a short plot approval for Larry Wimmer. It is to create two lots in parcel zero three one zero one four 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 zero zero one two zero zero. The proposed short plot is okay within a portion of section fourteen township three, range ten in the White Salmon vicinity. The administrative review of the short plot has been completed. Signatures have been obtained from the road, health and planning departments and the treasurer's office. All conditions attached to preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that it's in the public's interest to approve this short fat, a motion needs to be made granting final approval SPL two zero two two dash two three.
Okay, any discussion here? Okay, I would entertain a motion on this one.
Mr. Chairman, having before us the final approval of short plot SPL twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three in the White Salmon vicinity, my motion is to approve.
God, you did a little bumble there.
And I'll second.
Feel better. Motion in a second to approve SPL twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three. Any further discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of SPL twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Well, weird, you know, because you're used to saying twenty-three.
Twenty-three, that's twenty-three, yeah. Yeah, I got my bumble back and then I just passed a little bit of it off.
Mr. Chairman, having before us the consent agenda with ten items, I would make a motion to approve.
And I'll second.
Okay, motion is second to approve the consent agenda with all ten items. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. I think there's one more over here somewhere. We're going to get done way too early.
Sorry, I got, hey, I need to be done. It looks like he's going to.
But I just gotta glitch in the agenda matrix. As I go from two fifty, new business, nothing scheduled. The next item is two oh five, unfinished business. The clock, we just went back in time, so.
Thank you, ma'am. You want pay estimates?
Yep.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, having before us the approval of pay estimate number one and final for the Clickatac County Sidewalk Project. Winthrop construction was the lowest responsive bidder with a total bid in the amount of nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents. This project is included in MP Fund three oh seven budget. My motion is to approve.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve pay estimate number one and final. With throw construction, any discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, having before us the approval of pay estimate number one and final for the Clickatac County Jail Overhead Door Project. Overhead Door of Yakima was the lowest responsive bidder with a bid of twenty-six thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars. This project is included in the twenty twenty-three non-capital improvement budget. My motion is to approve.
And I'll second.
Okay, motion is second to approve. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of first and final for the Clickatac County Jail Overhead Door Project, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the county's payable warrants in the amount of two hundred and sixteen thousand. Uh, Mister Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable warrants in the amount of two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Two hundred and sixteen. Fourteen dollars and twenty cents and payroll warrants in the amount of one million. Uh, one hundred and fifty three thousand four hundred and seventy one dollars and seventy five cents for the date ending August twenty eighth, twenty twenty three.
I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion second to pay the bills. Uh, any discussion on? Hearing none, all is approved in favor of paying the bills, say aye.
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 I just thinking, I'm here till eight, so it's gonna be a long night.
I think we needed coffee for lunch.
I need some brain health. Um, my next item up is unfinished business Columbia, um, legacy conservation easement letter of support. Um, is there any discussion that we want to discuss for this little letter of support?
Yes, I have to.
Fire away.
Um, I forwarded something I didn't have time to print it, I forward, uh, something that was sent to me by Skamania County Commissioners. Uh, they've been approached with the same approval, uh, so I've been in. Talking to them and they'd like to take a little bit of time, um, to. Actually set up a meeting with us to talk to their county about their views on what's happening with timber. Uh, some approaches they're taking and some information they'd like to share with us. Um, they have concerns about the legacy program. And how that's going to impact Skamania Counties dwindling resources. Uh, dwindling, uh, revenues coming in, economic development. And I share the same sentiments with them, um. We did approve this project earlier, um, a couple of years ago or a year ago, I think it was based more on the. Oaks and oak preservation. Did this, oh no, this is legacy forest, okay, so, um. The legacy forest for me, I have some worries about it in the future on the, how it ties up such huge parcels. Um. When we're thinking about what we're going to do with our timber and approaching that in the future, how we're gonna handle that, if we. Uh, approve this and sign on and tie up such huge blocks. Uh, that's really gonna shortcut the possibility of private forests and the possibility of the county. Uh, entertaining, uh, timber trust in the future, uh, it could give us a big impact. Um, I also have concerns, um. In regards to, uh, the care and management of those, we talked about some differences. Um, in how some of those at the Forest Service level or in the legacy forest is taken care of for forestry management. And that email that I forwarded to you from Skamania County was actually, uh, a CNN. News brief about what the recent bootleg fire has done in Oregon, um. And it was in a legacy forest and how it diminished the carbon offset because it burnt everything up. So the promises of money in the future, if those are set aside in carbon credits. Uh, we could lose altogether, uh, let alone losing the forestry end of it. Uh, but I would like to, um. Be able to spend some time to talk about this as commissioners in a workshop and also. Honor the request of Skamania County, our neighbor, and have a commissioner meeting with them to discuss. Their information, everything they've gathered and where they're going in the future. Uh, so my suggestion would be, um, I know they, this is kind of on a timeline, they're at their bottom line of needing our letter of support. From Skamania County, I've learned there's also, uh, money available at DNR. So we may be able to purchase some of these, uh, properties rather than, uh, lose the development rights on the properties. So there's an offset for us to think about before we sign a letter to give everything away.
So I guess for me, that's where I need to know. What, what the thought process is going forward? Are, is that the thought process that we're gonna try to? Um. Entertain these grant funds ourself to facilitate the county buying and owning forestry?
Well, and for a long time, I've wanted to know, and we're gonna have to have a talk about that. In a workshop about how do we create that information from the treasurer, from the auditor, from the GIS mapping system? Over the years, we've never tracked how much has gone into conservation, how much has been set aside and what. Actually is appropriate as an end result, uh, before we wake up and we are Skamania County and we've lost. Um. Workable forest and income property for our county. Uh, with dwindling resources in other areas, we have to look to the future of what can we recap? Jake, you have a lot more background in this than I do.
So the forest legacy trust dollars are in essence, you're selling one portion of your ownership, you're selling the right to develop it into. Um, homes or industrial or anything else. When you're doing that, if in the, it's in the name, it's one of the few things that the name is actually goals to do what it's doing, it's not like legislation where usually it's the opposite of the name. That was for you.
Yeah, it worked.
But so by selling those development rights, that's one piece of that puzzle, that means that it's not going to get subdivided and developed, which some of these, these TMOs, these timber investment management companies are more than opt to do. You're seeing it up here in Sadis right now, and if somebody would apply for forest legacy dollars and it, it could have been locked up and could remained in forestry use, so. If your goal is to ensure that it stays in forestry use, it's not a bad idea. Now, when you, um, look at the, uh, what you, you sent over, um. On down there in the Calamuth area with that, so that was different, that was, that was not a forced legacy trust stuff, that was selling carbon offsets. So when you sell carbon offsets, what you're doing is you're in essence saying, I'm not gonna do my usual forty year rotation, I'm gonna push it to a hundred and twenty year rotation. And they're gonna get paid for having those offsets, well, what happens when it burns up, well, apparently you need to have insurance on those offsets. Cause they've used those offsets and now you're, it's gone, starting over, now that it'll burn, carbon oil went away.
And can you have that insurance?
Oh, you can buy it, but that's.
Insurance for anything.
I know, not anything.
I mean, darn near, depends on what you wanna pay.
Um, cause most, most forest ground does not have insurance on it, you didn't know that.
Well, that's.
Cause it's too expensive.
There you go.
Pencil.
I mean, it's no different than the land over here. They could have in Bickleton, they could have insured all that property, all that grazing ground for fifteen bucks an acre if they wanted to. But historically, it would have never been allowed to do so, so that's the reason they didn't do it.
Right, so the, the issue that I have isn't so much the stripping of the development rights off these large tracts of timber because that keeps more timberland in production.
I agree.
It's when you go to the next step, because if they strip that right off, the next thing they're gonna do is they're gonna try to sell carbon credits on it after. Or they're gonna try to, to flip it so that somebody else can sell the carbon credits, and then the next thing you know, you have these large blocks of land. That no longer have any use because it's just sitting there growing trees waiting to burn in essence. Um, that's where it comes, my, my policy decision issue. Um, if the Skamania County wants us to hold over and do a, 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 by, you know, a group meeting between the counties. We haven't had one in a while, I would love to schedule one as soon as possible, I think we have a lot of synergy between our counties that we have to, that we would make a good discussion. If, uh, because these dollars only come around, you know, so often and there's only so much. When I looked at the list that they sent us of where this ranked last time, it was at the bottom of the list.
Um.
Um, it was number fourteen out of sixteen, I think, and if Skamania County has a plan where they'd like to put forward. An idea that isn't just selling the credits, but actually trying to get ownership of the land, so then they can do a land swap for their encumbered properties. That would help the Skamania County out immensely versus having encumbered properties with DNR. Um, I could get behind that, um, we have always given letters of support for Columbia Land Trust and it's always, the board's opinion has always been. Um, you know, and. Private property rights, and if you wanna sell your, your development rights or whatever you wanna do on your land, that's between you and that, and we've always supported that. Holding off on it, if we're just holding off on it, I don't think that's a major policy shift. If we're saying we wanna talk to our neighbors, I don't think that's a policy shift, I know they want the answer now sooner rather than later, so. Um, I would have also said whether you should have brought it to us like three months ago. But if you'd like to hold it over, I'm fine with that. I don't, Commissioner Christopher, where are you?
I'm fine with it.
Fine with what, anything?
In all reality, I'm fine with signing the document the way it is, and fine with holding it over, it doesn't. Uh, affect me, so technically, uh, one way or the other, if, if a commissioner feels strongly. Um. That we should hold off, I will support that decision, hold on.
And we direct staff to, uh, reach out to their staff to get us a meeting set up.
I would like to do that, would you like to do that, Commissioner Christopher, that's a different conversation.
Well, I think that's a staff to staff.
No, no, the, the question.
Would you like to meet?
So there's, there's the question of the forest legacy, but then there's the next question, would you like to do a joint board meeting with Skamania County? Okay.
That'd be good, we have a lot to talk about.
Well, that would be the, the issue with the joint meeting. Whatever you have a lot to talk about. Uh, those individual items need spelled out so that she can have them, so they're actually on the agenda.
Okay.
And the same idea for whatever.
Yeah.
Items they have to make sure they get on the agenda, so. Uh, we don't have any issues if the general public wants to attend, whether that's in our county or their county, I think they went there last, so. Uh, whatever.
Didn't they, didn't they came, come up here?
They did PUD with the old board and then me and you went Stevenson.
Oh, right.
Which had a really good smoked salmon fettuccine, so even if I go back to Stevenson. Um, they had a really good smoked salmon fettuccine and it's.
It would be good if you could pull the agenda from the last one, because I think a lot of that's gonna be the same, the same stuff, like the conversation about financial software was on it, you know, the same things we're talking about today. There's a twenty twenty one.
Don't know when month in twenty twenty one.
Way through twenty twenty one, our agendas should show it.
Back then.
Summer months.
Yeah, it was hot.
It was warm.
Okay.
You're buying the smoked salmon fettuccine.
Bought tacos today.
That was a pretty darn good mushroom fettuccine, I'm telling you, when you go back, try that one. Um. Next item on here is the shared court costs with municipalities. So apparently, I don't know if all of the municipalities have issues or just some of them. Um, or, or at this point, what all is really going on, so it would be my recommendation that we invite all the municipalities, all the mayors. All the city managers or anybody else they wanna invite. Um, schedule something that allows at least, whether it's on a Tuesday or a Thursday, that allows a Zoom option. If they have something they can't attend on Tuesday, then we could just make it work on a Thursday. To get everybody in the same damn room to try to figure what's going on.
So I had a conversation with the, the mayor of White Salmon last night and it seems like the, the issue is more that we passed the ordinance before we signed the interlocal agreements. Um, when, and then the way that she read it was, I don't think the way that we've been doing it, we tried to make it very simple, you know, the. And so I think we're, we understand, I think it's more that we should have sent it to the, sent them the interlocal agreement. So that their attorneys could review it, so that then we could sign the interlocal agreement, so that then we have an interlocal agreement between us and the cities, and then we sign the ordinance. We do the ordinance after would be, in their opinion, the, the proper procedure and we kinda got that backwards, but.
So they're not complaining about the dollar amount?
I don't think they're, they're not complaining as far as I understand about the dollar amount, the dollar amount's the same, it's really simple, we're going. And, and when I explained to you, and I said, look, we're in our budget right now. If you guys have an issue with our budget, it gives you the opportunity to comment on it for next, next year's budget. Once we set the budget for next year, it makes it really easy for us, cause then we can look at the three years of back court costs. And we just take the average, their percentage of it, over average it over their, their average percentage of the last three years and multiply that by the court cost, it's not rocket science.
Well, I get that, but from my reading the email, they sounded like. They had a problem with the cost of fifteen thousand dollars and you'll get this money over a dead body kinda. Mentality going on in that email and I'm like, what the heck is?
That was not, I mean, we've had, they're getting a pretty sweet deal.
Yeah.
Like, add, add, add an extra zero to it if they wanted to do it themselves.
At least.
And so I think, I think that the, the city administrator Benjen got a little feisty and got everybody wrapped up, but.
So you're saying there's really no need for a.
No, I think.
How I'll get together.
I think we just. I think, I think we should definitely invite him up and have the conversation.
Yeah.
And we're gonna talk to him about probation at the same time.
Get one document out of the way and then bring up the next topic.
No, I think.
Let's do it all with him here. I don't wanna take.
Well, everybody's here and make it nice and clean and simple, you, you threw the mud right here.
Um. Yeah.
And so now we're gonna have a conversation.
Oh, there's just nothing to do in this county, there's just, it's so boring. Government in this county, just totally boring.
Are you not entertained yet?
It's constant entertainment, that's the problem. Um, okay, yeah, work with them, see if you can try to facilitate a time where, but make sure you don't just reach out to the mayors that you. You get city administrators too, because sometimes mayors don't necessarily pass it on. And then we get yelled at from city administrators.
And you, you included Goldendale, right? Great, see?
Okay.
Think we're, we're on the same page though, that's what we agreed to, that was what we designed, I mean, this, this isn't.
Yeah.
But I think it's a good opening for the, uh, conversation on. Pro- probation. Maybe we can get it all done at the same time.
Talking about the cities brought something back to my mind, um. It isn't new business, but it's something that needs to be taken care of if I can bring it up at this time.
Sure.
Um, McCad. Has to have an appointee from the cities and normally, um. The Board of County Commissioners picks someone, uh, City of Goldendale, City of White Salmon, and we. We choose somebody from one of the cities and we appoint them to the McCad board. And she said, um, if we don't want to take that on this year, they can go ahead and reach out, uh, to Pat Munyon or to somebody from. White Salmon and go ahead and get the position filled. But she wanted to know if we would like to pick our own appointee.
Do we usually appoint that position?
Uh, well.
Cause we usually, it's one of us, and then we, and then we appoint someone who to represent the city.
City, city representative that they kind of pick.
They give us a.
Yeah, it's kinda one of those EMS boards, we really want this guy and we just say.
She left it kind of open, that it just needed to be somebody representing the cities, it could be administrators, could be mayors, could be, just. Pick somebody from the cities.
When does it need to be by, can we add it to the conversation on the twelfth?
On the twelve, I can go back and ask her, it's McCad, it's Jessica, oh, ask the cities who would be interested.
Well, no, I'm saying if we have the conversation with all the cities present on the twelve.
Who would like.
Forward a name and we can talk about it.
Yeah, let me ask her if that's timely for her.
Okay. You okay?
Yeah. I could check it.
It's normally given held by Jan Brandy.
Oh, yes, I remember now.
Yeah. And it transitioned to Jason Hartman. Um.
The position is. Was Westside and then the last person, it's only been there a year and that was Westside.
It's usually an elected officer, city administrator that the county commissioners pick. She said she'd be happy to recute, recruit someone from Benjen or Goldendale. Uh, Pat Munyon comes to mind. Or would you think the county commissioner would want to do its own recruiting? So I can ask her if it's timely for her on the twelve, so if we can make a decision.
Um, if it was me, I would say since the last two came from that end, I would. See if Pat, that was interested.
Okay.
If he's interested, great, if he's not, send it back to that end and find somebody that is. That would be my opinion, one twenty one over eighty two.
Are you okay with that, Jake? Or do you wanna wait till the twelve? Or do you wanna wait till the twelfth and talk to everybody? Just.
Hey, Pat's really busy.
I was gonna say, I don't know that he's got the time or the capacity to do so, so but.
Or the desire.
Well, that's something, but I would like to let him tell you know versus we just assume now.
I, I mean personally, I would.
Have a city council person um that's really interested.
I personally would, would like to let the cities put forward the name that they want and let them bring it to us and.
Alright.
Okay, um we'll see to it. They get a letter and they'll bring in names on the
Perfect.
Have that discussion.
I mean technically, they should be in the room tonight, so. You could take two minutes in the case pita meeting and give them a tidbit of knowledge and then you, they can.
Jessica comes to those meetings too.
Sometimes.
Yes.
So. Two fifteen. Helen Robbie could probably do his afternoon update or his morning update this afternoon, but.
I don't have anything else for the good of the order, sir.
I think you're pertinent. No, I got nothing. I know I do, but the minute I close it, I'll think about it, but till then I can't think what it is.
Nope, you need to say.
Nope. Apparently I need to sign that one.
Okay. Uh not seeing anything else, Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting until nine AM Thursday, August thirty first, twenty twenty three for the scheduled budgeted workshops. Uh I will also note that the public is welcome to attend the workshops. Uh they are not recorded and Zoom is not available, and I would also note that the board will be in attendance at the case of pita meeting this evening at six P M.
Right, yep.
What? I'm just right here.
Oh.
Okay, well, the case of pita meeting will be at six o'clock tonight again.
Downstairs.
Downstairs uh for any public who would like to attend. My motion is to adjourn.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn any discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Aye.